I'd school district board of education, I would like to call us to order. And Dr. Cash, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation available this evening, and please indicate if you would like a headset, Ms. Limon.
Tenemos traducción disponible para cualquier persona que lo necesite. Tenemos audífonos. Aquí tenemos Teresa Lewis y Lourdes Fletcher que les pueden ayudar. Gracias.
Thank you. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired, and please indicate if you would like one. Dr. Cash, that takes us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Thank you very much. Just briefly on the translation, tonight we have Lourdes Fletcher and Teresa Lewis are here to record the meeting in Spanish. And we're continuing to work on securing a quality recording of our board meeting so that they can be aired on government access television. So we have the dual translators. We think that's going to help be helpful in ensuring that we get high-quality and accurate translations. Really want to thank Barbara Kiani, I see Steve Thompson and Steve Vizelini for all their hard work in making this happen for our community. For the superintendent's report, I'd like to introduce Elaine Alvarado for Human Resources Department. She's here to recognize seven employees who have 30-plus years of service to the district. Elaine.
Thank you, Dr. Cash and board members. As you know, this is our annual event, so to speak, where we do our recognition of service with the district. But just to remind and let everyone know that last week, we had our annual retiree reception, and we recognized 59 classified and certificated retirees, which total, I understand, of over 1,110 years of service to the district. So it's amazing. This year, we recognize our employees who have service credit of over 30 years. We specifically identify those that have 30, 35, and we're lucky enough to have two at 40 years of service that we'll recognize tonight. We are actually going to introduce our new pens that you now see on the screen. These were designed by Barbara Kiani and Linda Steele, and we are going to be presenting those for, starting this year, 2011-12, and they will then be presented year on. Just to note that what we've done is we've put in the years of service. Again, we recognize the five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years. So these are the pens, and this is the new design. We're very excited about having our pens reintroduced to our employees. This year, we have over 235 employees for this school year that will receive these pens. And in my calculation, I have almost 3,000 years of service to the students of Santa Barbara Unified School District, which is an average of about 13 years for our employees. So again, many thanks to Barbara for their work and Linda for their work on these pens. So actually, Dr. Cash, if you would like to come by, what we'll do is we're going to introduce our employees. And if you come up and meet with Dr. Cash and stand here, and we'll have you in front of the camera. First is Elizabeth Rodriguez. She is a 30-year employee at Cleveland School, one of our instructional assistants, special Another 30-year recipient is Carolyn Terracqua Brady. Next, we have Jenny Martinez. She did her. Jenny has been with us 35 years. She is on our child development program. Sally Viscara, 35 years. Of course, she is a teacher at Adams School. We also like to recognize Latice Amantala, the teacher at Franklin, 35 years of service. We also are very fortunate to have two recipients of our 40-plus years. The first we have is James Ranta, 41 years of service.
Thank you.
And our final employee we recognize is Ramon Trujillo, who we also recognized last week as a retiree with the school district, but 40 years of service, Ramon Trujillo, our head custodian at Santa Barbara High School.
Ramon, you have the model.
We're going to actually, go ahead and have, I'll give it to you, Ramon. I do want to show everyone what this looks like, special recognition after 40 years. It's a wonderful golden apple. So again, we'd like to thank all of you for your wonderful years of service. Congratulations.
Staff, I would also, on behalf of the board, just like to thank you so much for everything you do. The work that you've done through these years has really made our district a better place, continues to make it a better place. I've got a couple of you who are my children's teachers in this group, and I just have to really say what a wonderful job you're doing. So, thank you.
Well, it's, I mean, I look at, I worked, had the pleasure of working with Carolyn Terracqua Brady and Jim Ranta, and it's hard to imagine that either one of them have worked that long. They both still are so vibrant. And especially, I want to publicly acknowledge Jim Ranta's incredible dedication to the Galita community. It's inspirational to work with you, Jim, and thank you very much for what you've done. And Carolyn, you're always Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year, so, great job. And it's tough. When you retire as many employees as we did, over 1,000 hours, and then you recognize the service of these employees at over 3,000 hours, 3,000 years, excuse me, it really tells you the dedication that our staff has to this community and our school district and our students. It's really unbelievable how they come, they stay, they work hard, and they're definitely here for our kids. And what a great testament, great examples of incredible employees in our district that we got to recognize tonight. So thank you very much. And on with the rest of my report. This fall, lots of colleges and universities, and we're going to be providing the press with those specific names, because we want to really highlight them, are going to be welcoming our graduates. Because this last Wednesday and Thursday, we graduated over 1,500 students from our high schools as they accepted their diplomas and walked across the stage and on to the next chapter in their lives. And for those of you that were unable to attend the La Cuesta Alta Vista graduation, I've provided you with some copies of their speeches. It'll be posted on our website. One of the great things about our school district is that the La Cuesta Alta Vista graduation is actually the day before Santa Barbara Dos Pueblos in San Marcos, and so it's really a graduation ceremony worth attending. Very, very inspiring, those students going on, many of them to great jobs, great colleges and careers. It was a great, great weekend, our school district. School is out, and as soon as school gets out, David Hetjunk ensures that construction is underway at our campuses. Measures Q 2010 and R 2010 bond-funded projects, as well as other projects funded through other sources, are on our summer list. And you can see what's happening behind those, all those green-shaded walls by just visiting our website. We have plenty of pictures of our construction projects ongoing. One of the issues that faces not only our community, but all communities that have contact sports, is the concern regarding concussions. I'm really happy to report that we have entered into a partnership with Cottage Hospital and other groups in our community that will be providing free concussion diagnosis and treatment. And we will be hosting an awareness presentation on August 6th by Chris Nowinski, who's the founder of the Sports Legacy Institute, a nonprofit organization which raises awareness of concussions in contact sports. We're inviting all of our coaches and our administrators, know they need to be there, athletes and parents to attend this, what we think will be a very important discussion on sports safety. There will be another draft of the strategic plan that will be completed and put on our webpage, probably at the beginning of next week, and presented to the board the following week. And I am going to be announcing to the Strategic Planning Task Force tomorrow night that despite my personality type to want to get everything done at the time I promised, it was very clear that the feedback that I got from the community and all the people that I heard and listened to, that people want to still talk about it. So I'm not going to be delivering a draft of the plan for the board to consider, probably until sometime in the fall. I'm going to continue to meet with community groups throughout the summer. And it was consistent at each of the three community meetings at the high schools where, if not one, several people spoke about, you know, this is a great conversation, when can we have it again? We'd really like to talk more about it. And so I'm going to make sure that happens. At the beginning of next year, I'll be back out doing the same process, and I'll continue to meet with the community that don't have students in our schools throughout the summer. So it's contrary to my nature and maybe my, but I think it's the best thing. I think we'll end up with a plan that really reflects the most community input that we could get. I think we'll have a better draft present to you for your consideration. So, and this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Board, any comments or correspondence you'd like to share?
I'll make it real quick. I'll just reflect on what Dr. Cash said. The last two weeks, being at graduations and award ceremonies was just super. I mean, I can't even put it in words, to see and shake hands with so many students coming across with the looks of wonderment in their eyes of what's ahead for them. I'll just talk about one. I went to Adelante's sixth-grade graduation. And it holds a special place because of what they went through in the last couple of years and the effort we made to keep them in existence. And you could see in the talks by four students, and you could see in the parents' eyes that it was worth it. Happiest group of kids and parents and the students are so thankful. They have two languages they can speak now that they're going on to junior high school. And they all relish the fact that they started at Cesar Chavez and ended at Adelante, and they see no real difference in what they went through. It was just a pleasure to be there. I really enjoyed it, and I just, I have to tell you that when they started up the music and the kids came walking in in their caps and gowns for sixth grade, if it didn't bring tear to your eye, nothing would. I mean, you'd have to be something else if it didn't have you emotionally involved. It was just a pleasure to be there.
Thank you. I know we all attended graduations, and it's probably one of the best things that we do in this job, and it's really heartening to be there. So thank you for sharing that, and I know we all had terrific experiences at the graduations. I'm going to move on to C3, announcement of closed session action. Item B1, we will return to later this evening. Items B2 and 3 have nothing to report. And items B4 and 5, we will return to at the end of this regular session. Which takes us to C5, acceptance of donations. I'm sorry, it's moving too fast. C4, public comment.
And we do have public comment. Renee Kaminsky, and I think you're speaking for general public comment. Is that correct?
Yeah, on behalf of CSBA, California School Boards Association.
Yes, feel free to come up.
Well, thank you for your time. My name is Renee Kaminsky. I'm actually a registered nurse, and I work in conjunction with California School Boards Association, and I used to work at Los Angeles County Office of Education. And I just wanted to thank your school district for being part of CSBA. And I wanted to share with you some of the things that CSBA's been working on. Most recently, AB 114, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, which came about after Arnold Schwarzenegger, has to do with mental health services on behalf of the kids. And the fact that AB 3632 eliminated the school district's ability to pay for mental health services through the Sopa. And it's really put a serious challenge to school districts to provide services for these kids, especially kids that are in residential care facilities. So one of the new products from CSBA, and it's one of my babies, is health service contract mitigation costs, where in conjunction with CSBA, we help the school districts to actually say, wait a minute, this cost is not fair market value in relationship to private industry. Because school districts historically, unfortunately, have been charged for, and I've seen it myself as a registered nurse in healthcare, working with health plans previously, school districts are always charged a premium. And unfortunately, school districts don't have the language to be able to say, you know what, this does not seem reasonable, this does not seem fair on behalf of the kids, because just one small change in the contract can result in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this has come about after working with AB 114 on behalf of the mental health services, on behalf of occupational therapy services, nursing services. So I just wanted to share this important way of doing business now, as school districts start to think outside the box on behalf of your kids, where you can, you do have the ability to say, no, that does not seem fair, when you've got one district paying $135 an hour for occupational therapy services that's provided by a Coda, which is a non-licensed person, versus $85 an hour for a Coda, which is still a non-licensed person. So I just wanted to share that information on behalf of all the kids, and I think that Santa Barbara has a very large mental health need, when you look at the statistics. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of CSBA, and have a great summer. And this must be a fantastic place to work, to have so many people that stay this long. It must be awesome. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky.
Looks like we've got one more.
We do have one more. David Holmes, please.
I just wanted to take this time, one, to express my disappointment that measures W and X did not pass, that it's really critical for this board, I think, to make a decision to move forward with some, a partial tax, maybe for the November election, because without it, the cuts that would have to happen would be devastating to the arts, to music, to ed tech, tons of programs. It's killing me to think that we could possibly be sitting on thousands and thousands of dollars of musical instruments and not have a program for the students to learn music. You know, this district has invested an awful lot of money in musical instruments, enough for a violin for every kid. It's unbelievable, the commitment that has been made in this district. And, you know, I've been here for a long time in this district, and I can't remember it ever being this bad in terms of what is probably going to happen if we do not seek some alternative funding for arts and music and the electives in our community. So I would urge you to put your heads together and commit to maybe putting forward another partial tax in order to save these valuable programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sherri Fisher.
Good evening. I'd like to start by first saying thank you. You do an amazing job, all of you. I have five children of my own, who are adults now, but who attended school in this district, and certainly, every day was a pleasure. I'd also like to take a minute to say congratulations to Dr. Cash. I know I'm late, but I missed that, but congratulations to you. I'm representing MTD, the transit district. And so I won't surprise you with anything. I'm here to give you like an end-of-the-year report on how things went. And I probably should do that every year, so you can chastise me for being a few years late here. We have a great number of students riding the buses. We provide public transit service, not school bus service, but nevertheless, we serve all of the junior highs and high schools and a great amount of the elementary schools. We know that we have 624,000 students who rode this year, or student trips taken this year. It doesn't mean 624,000 students, obviously. And we also had on our boosters, where we provide additional service on top of our regular service, because of the crowds that are on the bus when the students are there, we also had another 243,000 trips taken on those booster buses. So successful for all of us. Like to say thank you to the junior high and high schools in particular. We always have a good rapport with the principals and vice principals, and any time that we have a problem on the buses, the response is almost immediate. So, you know, I'd like to thank you all for that. Want to tell you that we are a public transit agency, that we carry 26,000 passenger trips a day, so that's way above and beyond the number of students. Your students represent at least 8% of our ridership on a weekday basis. Many of the passengers that ride the buses are on those boosters we talked about, but we're public transit, so anybody can ride the buses. You know, we're not a school bus system. Just as you rely on MTD to transport the students, we rely on the calendars and bell schedules of the school district to know exactly what we're planning for you. We are, it's the end of the school year, we're taking a deep breath, too, but we're already planning for fall. So we've received information from all the schools, and we appreciate that, as to what those bell schedules will be, and we're accommodating that. I should warn you that there are sometimes we can't. We can, what you give us now, we can accommodate it, and we haven't made any changes to take away service this fall, other than a minor amount, an effect that will be on Santa Barbara Junior High for the crosstown shuttle, where if junior high leaves out early.
30 seconds.
I'm sorry. If junior high leaves out early, we'll have a difficult time accommodating them. But other than that, we're there for you. We want to let you know that when you do make mid-year changes on the school district, bell schedules is difficult for us, and we can't always accommodate it. Nobody likes to leave a student standing behind, but, you know, sometimes that does happen. We're also, as you know, we're a public agency, we're $600,000 in the hole this year, too. So this isn't to threaten you.
Thank you.
It's just to warn you and let you know our situation. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. That was actually very interesting, and I hope you will come back on a regular basis.
And I'm wondering if we can get a hard copy of that in the board brief, so that we can remember those numbers.
And we do have one more public comment. Lou Siegel, and I noticed that you like to talk about measures W and X. I'm not, that's on the agenda at the end. Would you like to speak now, or?
Yeah, because I can't stay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here to speak in opposition of it. And I just want you to know that I wrote an article for Newsweek opposing the measures, and it got over 55 comments, over 40,000 hits. And I think I had something to do with defeating it. And what I said was, no reform, no money. And I'd just like to give you a little history. The only other school parcel tax that has been defeated in Santa Barbara was in the Hope School District about eight or nine years ago, and I campaigned against that. And I think I had a lot to do with defeating that. So this is the second time I've done something, and to the extent I defeated it, you know, or helped, I'm glad. And the reason, what reform am I talking about? I read the collective bargaining agreement between the union and the school district, and that's an abomination of a document. You look at it, there's, you know, teachers tenure, hired for life, you have the first-in, first-out situation, no evaluations for teachers who have been here for five years or longer, because they can object to it. Any other tenure, teacher can't be evaluated, you know, every other year. You can't reassign a teacher without going through arbitration, and, you know, you know, various layers of bureaucracy and remedial, you can't discipline. There's no way a principal can actually run a school. If a private business had to be run this way, it would be out of business within a year. I noticed there were 15 pages on 17 different leaves. Personal injury, personal necessity, personal absence, contingent quarantine leave, bereavement, family illness, industrial accident, judicial, military, sabbatical, on and on, 17 leaves. I mean, what is this document? So, now you may ask, well, why, you know, what can we do about this? This is all written in the state code, we can't negotiate this. But here's how I would ask you to write the ballot. If you write a ballot and ask for, you know, these additional partial taxes and make it contingent upon the union agreeing to make these concessions, the tenure, because nobody should be hired for life without evaluation. No one can justify that. The kids, they, you know, if a teacher is ineffective, the principal should be able to fire that teacher. You owe it to the kids.
30 seconds.
Okay. So the other thing I'm going to do, so I am going to oppose this, I'm going to raise money, I'm going to spend my own money, I am going to actively oppose it, I'm going to contest the ballot language, which is biased, dishonest, unfair. I'm going to make sure there's opposition language on the ballot. You know, this is not going to happen without a fight, unless you're willing to do what I suggest, is make it contingent upon the unions actually making concessions so a principal can run a school.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay, let's move on to C5, acceptance of donations.
I'm sorry, could we just maybe point out that some of the information stated about the contract is not accurate, so people might, public members might want to read the contract if they are so interested.
Much of what was stated is inaccurate.
Okay, thank you.
I will move to accept the donations with appreciation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to the consent agenda, also, I just want to alert the board that we have a 7:05 time certain. On the consent agenda, are there any items board members would like to pull? I would like to pull D10. Do I have a motion for the remainder?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, we have about three and a half minutes before we're at our time certain. I'm wondering if item E3 will take as much as five minutes, or if we can conclude that quickly. Ms. Peak, you want to come on up? E3 is approval of declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the 2012-13 school year and adoption of resolution number 2011-12/63.
Good evening. One of the perfunctory things that you as a board have to sign off on each year is this annual declaration of need. And this is based on what we are projecting as possible credentials, assignment permits that we would need as a district. The Commission on Teacher Credentialing requires that we as a district do this declaration of need on a yearly basis if we're employing anyone who is not fully credentialed. It's very limited as to what we can offer the declaration of need on. It's typically limited assignment permits, emergency CLADS, BCLADS, emergency resource specialist, and some emergency library permits. So we would just ask that you approve this. It can be revised during the year, should we need to add additional credentials to this list. But at this time, we ask that you approve it as stated.
Thank you. And I know we've seen these kinds of resolutions in the past. Board members, are there any questions, discussion regarding this? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the 2012-13 school year and adoption of resolution number 2011-12-12-63.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And now, I think we're right on time for our time certain item. I am going to close our regular session and open our public hearing. We are now commencing public hearing regarding the proposed use of Tier 3 state categorical funds and approval of resolution number 2011-12-60, Tier 3 categorical flexibility. Ms. Jete.
Thank you, President Deacon. Each year of the Tier 3 flexibility, a public hearing must be held in order to maintain our eligibility to receive the funds. As a condition of the receipt of funds, the governing board of the school district, at a regularly scheduled, open, public meeting, shall take testimony from the public, discuss, approve, disapprove the proposed use of the funding, and make explicit for each of the budget items. We ask that the board approve the resolution 2011-12-60 regarding the proposed use of the Tier 3 categorical flexibility for the year 2012-13.
Thank you. Board, we have also seen this before, and unfortunately, we know why we have to do this, or at least consider doing it. Is there any comment? we, we have to do this, or at least consider doing it. Is there any comment, Ms. Limon?
I just, I just have a question. When you look at exhibit, I think it's A, I was looking at the totals, and there's really just slight differences, but the projected revenues is for $4,681,000 plus, and the total allocations is $2,019,000 plus. But, the numbers in each column change a little bit. So, I was just trying to figure out what, why the math was different.
Mr. Tedeschi, would you like to answer that?
Sure. The projected revenues are all the revenues that we're getting for all our Tier III accounts. The, the total on the right probably should have included the initial 50% and 30% reductions that are taken off the top for district use. And then, so the total allocations would be all of the different functional areas, instruction, general admin, instructional library, all of those should equal up to the $2,019,940.
So, got it. So, the addition is going from left to right, not from top to down?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It should be, actually, it should be both ways, but you got to take out the first, that first column that says 50% and 30% reduction.
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't see any other comment here, so we will go ahead. And do I, can I entertain a motion to pass the proposed use of the Tier III State Categorical Funds and approve resolution number 2011-12 dash 60?
Do we close the public hearing first?
Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. We're going to reopen our public session. And now, we will take this under advisement.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you. That takes us to item E-3, Approval of Second Reading and Adoption of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6146.1, High School Graduation Requirements. The board did take this up at our last meeting. We had some good discussions surrounding it. Mrs. Cordero, you did have to lead before we got to. We wanted to make sure you had a chance to weigh in if you would like. So, let's go ahead and talk about E-2. We didn't really make any changes, I don't think. We, we talked in depth about it, but, board members, would you like to revisit it as it's before us? Now, Ms. Limon?
I just have one little edit, page three. We'd probably want to make the font science consistent.
Oh, yet again. Let's see. Where?
Page three, at the very bottom, summary of required courses, units.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I'd actually just like to note that, you know, it's been in the press widely lately that the governor has, has now said that only one year of science would be required for graduation. And yet, I'd like to point out that our policy absolutely requires two years. And also, we require health science, which is a class that we've seen other districts have also begun to eliminate for budgetary reasons. So, we, we show that we have a firm commitment to these areas, and that's included in our graduation requirements.
I might note too, that the first reading did not have on several pages, but page one in particular, where it has the ed code crossed out. The reason I'm crossing that out, or suggests we do that, is it, we have more than what ed code requires. For instance, first one in English, it only has four years by ed code. So, we've added, excuse me, three courses. We've had four. So, everything that's crossed out that has ed code is because we've increased the amount in our district.
Thank you. I noticed you also did break out a separate heading for community service.
Yes.
I believe Mr. Heron had pointed out our need to do that. Mr. Heron?
Yes, I, I just have to revisit one of the topics I asked about last time, and that is, is this a budgetary decision? And, and the answer I got was no, there was no budgetary results from this. And I guess if I vote yes on this, it's going to be with the caveat that I think we have to look at it as a budget. Dr. Cash has indicated to me that as long as we require six classes, then we, it's not a budgetary decision.
We've got a, I'm sorry, we've got a mic problem right now. Is there a way to turn down the gain somewhere on one of the microphones? Is it coming from the translation setup? Not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, and it's nothing that you can do anything about, but we're getting a lot of feedback. Okay. Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Heron.
But when you, when you look at how many units some of the student takes at the various high schools, and you look at some of them that are well over 300, some even go over 400, and the average is anywhere from 250 to 290, or the mean, it just seems to me there's got to be room in there someplace to reduce the number of units the students will be taking. And as I understand it, our requirement in our policy is 240 hours, which is not six classes per day. All I say is, when we get, we've lost the parcel taxes, when we look at the budget in the future, I don't want this off the table. I mean, we may have to look at it, and I would, I don't want to have to hold Dr. Cash to his statement that absolutely it's not a budget issue, because you made it very clear. And I don't want to hold you to that. I want to make it public right now, I don't hold you to that.
I appreciate that. The, as, as, the issue is unrelated to credits. It's related to how we staff. We staff at students going to school in, in every school but San Marcos at six periods per day. So, whether they get 180 units or 250 units, that's still how they're staffed. And that's based upon the board administrative regulation, which requires six classes per semester to be enrolled in, or 240 minutes of ADA, other than the second semester of their senior year in which they could take five classes. So, if those things change and they're reduced, then it would definitely be a budget reduction.
And what I, what I'm saying is, that may have to happen.
Right.
And so, we need to be able to look at that. And again, I don't want to hold you to absolutely this is set in concrete.
I should note too, with your reference to the mean being much higher than 240, those credits are also including City College credits, other types of credit that students earn.
It was interesting to see those charts you, charts you provided to us. And I, to be honest, I'm not sure that those numbers will change a lot with this. They probably won't.
They probably won't.
Yeah.
Because our students take courses all, all over the place.
If anything, a lot of them are having trouble getting everything in that they want to take.
Maybe we don't have the luxury to have that happen.
I understand.
Well, one, I, I went back and, I mean, I did watch the remainder of that board meeting when it was televised, and I appreciate your discussion. And I also appreciated that you wanted to make sure I had an opportunity to comment on this. Ms. Swasky, you answered one of my questions, which was why the ed code was crossed out. And then, the other question that I had, which I, I think came up partially in that discussion that, where I wasn't present, but I don't remember if it was raised exactly, which was, one of the, one of the issues that we have is parity for the different schools. We talked about the fact that one of our high school students are able to earn a lot more units for graduation than at other high schools. And that's kind of, that's somewhat, not directly related to graduation requirements, but I do want to know if that, if we're going to address that issue at some point. And it certainly could become a budget issue. But also, I just think it's sort of an equity issue, that some students have access to a lot more units than others.
Well, there was a very conscious decision to, in one of the, the board's approved budget reductions, to reduce the additional staffing that San Marcos High School received as a result of the four-four block schedule prior to this, my arrival. So, so they don't get additional staffing anymore. But, that conversation would have to include a conversation about continuing the four-four block schedule.
So, it is linked to staffing. And then, when you go to San Marcos, the way that the, with the block scheduling, it does allow more time in the day. So, again, these students are enrolled at their own cost when they do additional classes at City College that are not the ones that are dual enrollment with us. It is at their own cost. So, that's not an expense of the district, but they just have more time to do that. That's one little factor of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I will move to adopt Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 6146.1, High School Graduation Requirements.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five, zero. We're now moving on to E-4, Approval of Program Management Agreement with TeleQ Construction Management for Program Management Services for current measure Q 2010 and measure R 2010 capital bond project issues. Mr. Hetjung?
Before David gets started, I want board members and the public to note that E-4 has been revised, and you should have a revised copy in front of you.
I apologize for any errors in, in taking contracts and revising them and cutting and pasting. And some of us don't have a lot of office help if we, sometimes don't. Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And so, I apologize for those mistakes, and also for addressing one of my agenda items to Dr. Sarvis instead of Dr. Cash. Another past error on my part.
Mr. Hetjung, I think we're still having some problems with the mic.
I may have turned it down too much when I got rid of the gain. But this one. And so, we're bringing back this item to you for approval. The, the contract has, has been revised. What we're asking for is approval to get started on this contract, so we can sit down and come to an understanding of estimated hours that we think are going to be required for task one, get started on that task, and then bring back that updates to the district. We're understanding that it's still not, maybe we want to turn it back up again. Hello? Nope. Hello?
Hello?
Yeah.
Go Kings.
I got some feedback now.
This one has the little red sticker on it, if I'm never here, and you'd need to find it down there in the box. We're bringing back this, this contract to you. We've discussed it before. This is the, the contract for our help with our program management in setting our master schedules, along with priorities, budgets. And so, we have a, a, a board will have an overall view of both measure Q and measure R when we bring projects forward for approval, as to where we stand as we have budget increases or decreases in projects in the future. If you call for our board agenda items, when we did our measure Q and measure R approvals, we asked for an amount that would not increase the tax rate, not an amount needed to do all projects. We did not go through the process of assigning costs to every projects. That's a lengthy task. And so, now that they're approved, we're asking to do this task, so the board knows more of where we are and what's happening as we move forward. I believe it'll give the board a better understanding and feel more comfortable when they approve projects, and we help our citizens oversight committees with their responsibility as far as them reporting back to you as to how we're doing and giving more information to the public.
Thank you. Board members, Mr. Heron?
One of the problems I find with the contract, and I've expressed this to you, is that in essence, it's a blank check at this point. And on paragraph two, it talks about the program management services budget amount for each task is intended to provide the district with, I presume, reasonable fiscal controls. And yet, when I look at the things they're going to do, A to G, it doesn't say create a management service budget. And it would seem to me that should be a high priority, that we should know fairly quickly how much money we're signing this contract for. And it's a five-year contract. It is subject to cancellation, but I would like to see a budget. And so, I know how much we're talking about rather than just, well, obviously, we'll give this to you. But, I think we need to include in A to G, part of their process to create a budget for us.
Dr. Cash?
One of the things, yeah, we will definitely have that. Our problem is, is that I could bring forward a budget, and then I could, I would be, I could be back in two weeks saying, now, or two months from now, now that they've started the work, this is really what it's going to cost. This is very similar to the, the legal services agreements that we enter into, and other professional management agreements that we enter into. Without them beginning to perform the work, we really don't know how much the work's going to cost. We're starting at ground zero. As a fiscal accountability measure, we're going to be meeting with them every two weeks. They're going to be providing us, both David and I, with both an update as to how much time is spent, and what they've completed on task one in relationship to the project. And we will be reporting it at every board meeting, probably not at the next board meeting if the contract's approved, but subsequent board meetings, the work that's being done. I could, we could guess right now as to what it would be, but I don't know if that would be valuable.
Well, sometimes we put a maximum on, just to put some type of top limit on it. But it seems like we have a contract that says we have a budget that could protect our fiscal, give us fiscal controls, that we should have a budget that protects our fiscal controls.
The plan would be to bring back, once they've been able to start the work and they know what it's going to, what the work's going to entail, back to you that information. At this particular point, we, like I said, it would be an artificial constraint.
Mrs. Parker?
If they come back and say, we estimate for the first task that it's going to cost a million dollars, and I hope I'm wildly exaggerating on that, but if they were to come back with some astronomical figure, are we able to say, stop, no, this isn't going to happen?
Absolutely.
So, just to follow up on that question, where is, where would we see in the contract that it allows us to say no, that's, we don't want to proceed? Is it, I'm sorry, which one is it?
Number seven.
Number seven, okay.
Ms. Limon?
Dr. Cash, when do you think you would bring us back that first initial estimate? Because one of the things that I'm hearing is that first, there needs to be an assessment of the amount of hours before you can give us some kind of number. But I also see that this is from 2012 through 2017 with an annual rate increase. So, I'm trying to figure out just, I think it is important to get a sense of some numbers. So, when would we have some idea?
Well, as I stated before, a project like this, because we don't have any of this done yet, is going to be between one and one and a half percent of the total bond amount. So, that's, that's, that's kind of what I estimate it to be. So, I mean, I have no problem bringing back at the next board meeting a caveat to this that says that they can only spend $50,000 at a time, but they'll be coming back to you every time. I, I don't know how else to explain it to you, except for it's like, like our legal services agreement that we have. We don't know how much it's going to cost on any particular case until they actually investigate and get going on the case, and then they know. Well, our estimate is going to be, it's going to cost $10,000 to prosecute or defend this case, whatever it may be.
And task one is just one of the aspects that would be covered under this contract. Task one, once it's completed and we have that master schedule, then it's just maintaining that master schedule. And then, we would go on to the other tasks, two and three is outlined in the RFP RFQ. So, we're not spending all of the money on task one that we would be spending.
I'm glad you pointed that out. Mrs. Parker?
Well, I'll just jump back in and say that it's actually, it's, it wasn't part of this attachment. And I think it's really very helpful for you to remind us that your initial estimate was one to one and a half percent of the bond amount. So, for example, in the elementary district, $35 million bond, the estimate would be spending roughly $350,000 for the source of services.
Yeah, over the next five years.
Over the next five years. So, we'll...
For all tasks.
For all tasks.
Not just the...
For all tasks. So, that when, if, if that can be part of the attachment when it comes back to us... when it comes back to us, we'll be able to sort of judge how, how out of line with that original estimate, or hopefully, you know, what incredible savings we'll be getting because they're discounting everything.
We would hope to be frugal.
Thank you. That would be, that would be really useful to us.
Well, and I'm sure board members would join me in asking that you're very much aware of whether we're getting value for our money as, as they come to you with their estimates of time. And I, my hope by approving this is that we will save money by not making mistakes and by doing things efficiently and finding economies of scale. And those are the arguments that I see for moving ahead on this is because we're kind of sometimes moving in the dark and we need to do this very systematically.
And they'll also be meeting, not with Dr. Cash and I, but they'll be meeting with our construction managers, our project managers, our architects, our engineers, all gaining the input to get accurate assessments of the projects. And so these people will also be keeping an eye on what they're doing.
Mr. Heron.
Yeah, we're focusing here on task one. But as they go through and do all this research, are they really going to be doing research on tasks two and three at the same time? Or are we going to be focusing this first budget amount on task one?
This first budget amount would be on task one. Task two and three would be doing assessments of other facilities and schedules that aren't part of the current measure Q and R and doing assessments on what it would take for, and what is needed for future bonds. If the board chose to go out there, the board this way with the task would be able to have a concrete, accurate need of what is there. The public would. And then you can make a decision in the future if you wanted to move forward with any other thing of capital improvements.
It would also answer what I thought was a very good question that you asked about two months ago in relationship to the condition of a roof at a school site. I think it's essential for us as an organization to have that kind of information, not just for roofs, but for every system in our, in our, in our organization in order to, to be, as President Deacon said, very, very judicious in what we do, when we do it, and how we do it. Right now, unfortunately, we don't have. We're at ground zero.
In your email to me, you said it might take hundreds of hours. Is that on the, close to 200 or close to 900?
I'll, I'll know a lot more in a couple of weeks, but I'd say, you know, you're, just off the top of my head, you're going to spend.
You don't want to say.
Maybe, maybe.
Don't say it.
Yeah.
But I just care, 200 or 900, you know.
Somewhere in between those.
More, more, more than two.
But.
For, for both bonds.
But, Mr. Heron, I can assure you that you're going to be getting regular reports on their work as well as what they're spending, or what we're spending. And we're going to, we will get a budget from them as to what they anticipate the cost will be to doing this project. It's, they're coming in blind into this as to, you know, they've, they've had a chance, they've, they've interviewed David, they've interviewed Carl, they've interviewed the other Dave. But there's a lot of information they're going to need to get in order for them to do task one.
We've spoken on the phone and they have a list of our possible projects list. And right now, that's all they have to go on.
Okay, I would just.
Drill down a lot.
I'd feel a lot better if one of the items they were doing was creating a management services budget, but that's my feeling.
They will create one or they won't get paid?
Okay.
How's that?
Good.
Well, and they've clearly done this before. So once they get up to speed in our district, I'm hopeful that that expertise will expedite what they're going to do for us because they know what they're doing. Okay. Board members, do we have a motion on E four?
I will move to approve the program management agreement with TeleQ Construction Management for Program Management Services for measures Q and measures R 2010 capital projects bond issues.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion passes five zero. Thank you. We look forward to those updates. We're now moving on to E five, approval of resolution number 2011-12-61, designing certain products, brands, or services pursuant to public contract code section 3400 for Santa Barbara Unified School District's maintenance service systems and technology service systems. Mr. Hetjung.
Thank you. I was torn whether to put this on consent or action and decided to put on action because I thought there would probably be some questions and why do we need this? Why are we going through this? With measures V and I 98, and even back to the first measure R, which was to be real, to rebuild Roosevelt in 95, our architects and engineers create plans and specifications. And as part of these specifications, they include products that we want to specify. The public contract code says if you're going to list a product in there, you must let a contractor submit for a equal product if they truly believe this product is equal. And then it's the incumbent upon the district and the architect of record or the engineer of record to evaluate that product to say, is it in fact an equal product? While some products have appeared to be equal on the service, on the surface, we've now had experience with some plumbing systems and other systems that we've put in with measure V and I 98. And our maintenance department is already replacing a lot of one brand where they're not replacing a lot of another brand. It seems to last a lot longer, where when you evaluate, you know, apples and apples, basically in the beginning, both apples look the same, but they don't last as long. So we've learned from experience that certain products serve us well and are more economical for the district in the long run with the lifecycle cost. In addition to that, we have a reduction on our maintenance department. We don't have as many trucks. We don't have as much room for supplies, materials. We have one plumber. We used to have two. So it's imperative that we be more efficient. In addition, there's training on certain systems. And what brought this to light, I've been thinking about doing this for quite a while, but what brought it to, to bring at this point in time is our network systems. We've, we've made a standard of our Aruba. And we want to make sure that we purchase Aruba switches and in the future that match our network system. So we only have to have training on one system. We don't have to have extra equipment to make the two separate manufacturers and systems talk to each other and have a constant upgrade and technology nightmare for our, our technicians to keep things running and keep the classrooms functioning. And so Mr. Tanguey was able to find a CMAS contract that we could piggyback on to for that system for the last purchase that you approved. But, but we want to make sure that we get systems that last, that serve the district well, and that end up in the long term being efficient and costing us the least amount of money. We're not asking to go to certain companies. There's many companies that carry these products that can still bid on supplying those products to contractors. What we're doing to the contractor is saying, don't ask for a substitution because we usually want a contractor who wants to substitute something is because he is also going to have a savings that he is not going to pass along to the school district. Otherwise, there would be no incentive to ask for the substitution.
Sounds like you're saying some products are more equal than others.
Exactly, yes.
Sorry, I couldn't resist saying that. So would we ever be precluded from using something that we later determined was better?
No. In fact, I was very careful not to put too many model numbers on this list because as a model number changes, you know, we don't want to come back with, with a resolution every three or four months to ask you to change things. I used the model number on the drinking fountain because that, that, our bottled water filling station, because that's kind of imperative that we want that model to keep them all the same because our, again, our one maintenance person is, and they make different models of that system. But I can anticipate that periodically we would come back to you as, as we find that things change, or maybe a manufacturer has changed their process and this product is no longer what we really want. We want to look for another one to take its place. But these are things that we've had years of experience with failures and non-fa failures. And we don't want to keep buying things that we know are going to fail in the future in a short period of time.
Thank you. Mrs. Cordero.
I just have a very minor comment, and that is inconsistency with the way that the agenda item title is printed on the agenda versus on our packet. I think it's correct in our packet as it reads there, designating certain products, brands. However, on our agenda, it says designing.
You're right. When I read designing, it didn't sound quite right. It's, you're right, designating. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Heron.
I move approval of resolution number 2011/2012-61 regarding designating certain products, brands, or services per the contract, public contract code.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We won't ask you to design those parts.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to item E six, approval of CSEA memorandum of understanding regarding furlough days for 2011, I'm sorry, 2012-13. Mrs. Alvarado.
Thank you, board members. I'm, I'm bringing forward the MOU signed by CSEA and the district on May 11th. As in my brief report, we did start meeting in April of 2012 to discuss furloughs. This is an ongoing discussion regarding our budget reductions and follows pars. And we did reach an agreement on the furloughs as described in the MOU. Essentially, we are looking at furloughs to be implemented after the November election as far as the designated days, which we've outlined. And I'll explain on those in just a bit. But in addition to that, we will implement the reduction of days starting 2000, in July 2012. Depending upon the outcome of the elections, then we will go forward or reinstate those days. One of the things that we had to, to discuss in detail was our different positions that we have as classified employees. We have what we consider nine-month, 10-month, 11-month, and 12-month employees. Given their work calendars, given the amount of days that they work with students or with, without students had to be taken into account. Thus, you see the days that we designated that are the least impact to student. So nine-month will take those furlough days if it goes forward at the end of the school year. Again, with 10-month and 11-month. On the 12-month, the intent is to establish those days and schedule those days with their supervisor sometime after November. This MOU, as you could see, was very detailed. We were, again, spent much time on the specifics of the agreement, but ultimately, we did sign off. CSEA has approved and ratified this MOU, and they did that on May 24th. Any questions on it?
Thank you. And I'll just note that this represents a savings of.
Correct.
Over $450,000.
Over $450,000.
To the district. And I would also just really like to thank our staff because we know this is a sacrifice and we appreciate it. I mean, words can't really say how much we appreciate this. Mrs. Parker.
Yes, I'll just chime in with the thanks. I saw that Mr. Rooney, our CSEA local unit president, was here earlier. He's not here now, but I'm sure he was here honoring the, the staff that had been here for such a long time. But to him and to the rest of the negotiating team on the CSEA side and obviously on our side, I am so appreciative. Thank you, Ms. Alvarado, for everything that you've been doing. And, and I'm really hoping that we don't actually have to implement it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we're ready for a motion.
I will move to approve the CSEA MOU on furloughs 2012-13.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion passes five zero. Thank you again. That brings us to E seven, approval of board action on student discipline cases, number 1112-21, 1112-23, 1112-27, 1112-31. Mrs. Parker.
In case 1112-21, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a suspended expulsion.
I will. Second.
For one school year.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passes five zero.
In case 11/12-23, I move to approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel for a one calendar year full expulsion with the proviso that the student can come back at the end of the first semester and request a suspended expulsion for the second half of the calendar year.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passes five zero.
In case 11/12-27, I move to approve the recommendations of the hearing panel for a suspended expulsion for one school year.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passes five zero.
And in case 11/12-31, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a full expulsion for the spring 2011-2012 school term and a suspended expulsion for the fall 2012-2013 school year.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passes five zero. Thank you. We now move on to our conference agenda. We will begin with F one, the first reading of selected board policies and administrative regulations in the 1000 series. Mrs. Kiani, thank you. All right. Maybe we should just go through these in sequence. And I know you provided summaries here of the rationales for the changes. And I actually have a question about board policy 1000-100. Maybe I'll just start with my question, if that's okay. All right. In your, in the summary, it says that the section has been expanded to include additional definition of mass mailing related to ballot measures, candidates' legislative activities, and other campaign activities. But when I read the language, I didn't see anything related to that precisely in there.
I have the drafts. Unfortunately, you don't have the strikeout version that shows what CSBA added. On page three, there's a subject heading that says prohibition against mass mailings at public expense, but it doesn't say anything relative to election mailings. And this is kind of germane because this may impact our discussion later, which is why it caught my eye.
And, Mrs. Deacon, I might be able to answer that question because I went and looked at the government code 82041.5 and 2CCR 18901 that were referenced. And I think that what the CSBA was getting at, because it is about board members' elections, well, not board members' elections, but using board member photographs and information and any mailings. So those codes were changed to include mass mailings. It now prohibits, it expanded what a mass mailing definition was, that you couldn't send your picture on. So now that includes ballot measures and legislative activities, things like that, whereas that wasn't defined before in the code. So I think that the, that the CSBA's little synopsis is just a little bit misleading. It was, it was getting to that point instead of saying that that's, you know, broad brush banned. It's a.
So no district newsletters with our photographs?
Exactly. What is that about?
But to, to just clarify, that would not influence informational information provided, say, in a parcel tax election?
Well, as long as it was strictly about what services are provided and it's not advocating a position, correct.
Would you like the little CSBA explanation on why they made the change? Because I have that in front of me.
Sure, although I, sure, of course.
If that satisfies, we're good. Otherwise, what it says is that government code 82041.5 and 8900.1, and again, another California regulation prohibit the use of public funds for mass mailing, which features board member, a board member or includes the name, signature, or photograph of a board member except as specifically allowed by law. And then in quotes, "Mass mailing is defined as over 200 substantially similar pieces of mail sent in a single calendar month, not including form letters or mail sent in response to an unsolicited request, letter, or other inquiry. Because the law is very complex with complicated definitions and numerous exemptions, districts are encouraged to consult with legal counsel if they have questions regarding the appropriateness of a planned mailing."
Thank you, thank you both. That definitely answers my question. Board members, so moving along with this 1000 series, are there other items that you would like to draw our attention to? Mrs. Parker.
I actually, I didn't, I didn't have any typos to correct, but probably my fellow board members have caught things. I just wanted to point out on the board policy change in. have caught things. I just wanted to point out on the board policy change in Board Policy 1250 on visitors and outsiders. Page 16. Yeah, page 16. That, three-quarters of the way down the page, there's a little pull-up that says, "No electronic listening or recording device may be used by any person in a classroom without the teachers and principals' permission." And that's Ed Code 5151.2. And I went and looked at that, and it's a misdemeanor for anybody who's not a student to pull that in. But then it says for a student, then the regular, you know, whatever the district has come up with in terms of their discipline policies applies. And I just want to note that especially with modern smartphones and other devices, our Exhibit 5144 that is to do with discipline, there is one area that kind of covers this, but maybe when we, the next time we review 5144, we should keep this in mind and really call out, you know, recording and listening devices, using those inappropriately as part of a suspension list and what that would entail, what punishment would be for students.
And noting there will be times when students might want to record for very real reasons. Okay. Mrs. Limon?
I'll just kind of take you through a few. On page three, at the very bottom, that last paragraph, just font consistency, I just want to note, so I'm going to move fast because it's a few things. It's too small. Yeah, it just shrinks. Last one.
Okay.
On page 38, this is the relations between other governmental agencies and schools, so BP 1400. I actually just want to note that I think that this is a really great idea, and I look forward to hearing more about this and how we implement it in our schools, specifically the part about having our students at the high schools do some voter registration. So I just wanted to note that I'd love to hear how that goes and how it gets implemented in our schools.
Sure, I can tell you briefly that each high school does it, but I'll get more specific information for you because I'm quite confident there'll be an active campaign this fall.
Great. Page five, I'm sorry, 45. The first two paragraphs, again, the first two paragraphs, again, just consistency and font size. And that's it.
All right. Well, we've made very few changes of substance, so do we have a motion to approve this at our first reading?
I will move to approve, to delete the old board policies and administrative regulations in the 1000 Series that are listed in Board Bylaw 9320 and replace them with the new versions, subject to minor edits.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. We've moved on to F2, First Reading of Selected Board Policies and Administrative Regulations in the 5000 Series. In our book, page, let's see, 5141.6, I believe starts at page. Sorry, lots of paper here. Is that right? 5141.6. No, oh, you know, they're slightly out of order. I'm sorry, that's what confused me. Okay, let's start on page four. That's B 5141.21. Do we have any recommendations, suggestions on that one? Okay. Then if we move to 5141.6, that begins on page 18. No changes? All right. Page 31 is 5144.1. Suspension, expulsion, due process, beginning on page 31. Mrs. Parker.
I will just note, because that's actually quite a long one going into the AR 5144.1. I just wanted to note, not a change, but on page 70, readmission after expulsion, this is actually not a change from our current AR. But again, it says that the superintendent or designated shall transmit to the board his or her recommendation regarding readmission, and the board shall consider this recommendation in closed session. We are not seeing the readmissions, and I think that Ed Code and Board Policy really indicates that we should be approving the readmissions. And so I think that's something that we needed to be talking about.
Okay. I can see Mr. Sumter noted that.
From expulsions.
From expulsions, yeah.
Right. Page, okay, page, let's see, 5144.1, the AR of page 53, I guess we already moved through that? Okay. And then AR 5144.2, page 77. Anything to add or note there? This has to do with students with disabilities. Nope. Okay. And BP 5145.3, nondiscrimination harassment, which has been replaced, that begins on page 86. I don't see anything there. And then BP and AR 5145.7, sexual harassment, these have been replaced, and they begin on page 92. I'll just note, for the public's sake, that many of these are updated because of new legislation, and we have taken language that's offered quite often through CSBA so that we're in compliance with the new regulations and language that's provided through the state. Mrs. Parker.
I do actually really want to compliment both the District Team and the CSBA because it seems like even with the routine policies that come through with updates, there have been so many typos or whatever in past years, I feel like we're able to essentially just sign off on these so much more quickly, more recently. I've been very impressed with it. So thank you to our staff and to the CSBA. I think that they're actually probably doing a better job on their end as well.
It really makes everyone realize how much work goes on at the legislature in terms of all these new laws. And sometimes, when you look at the level of detail, you have to wonder about how their time is being spent. And I don't mean that really.
It's nice to be called at work.
Okay. I better stop there. Okay, so do I have a motion on the 5000 Series?
I'll move to remove the obsolete board policies and ARs that are in this agenda item and replace them with the revised and new board policies and ARs in the 5000 Series.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes five zero. We're now moving on to Item F3, First Reading of Board Policy 0410, nondiscrimination in district programs and activities, Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 1312.3, Uniform Complaint Procedures, and Administrative Regulation 6159, Individualized Education Program. And we do have a cover sheet here from Mrs. Sawaski about why these changes have come forward. Most of them are procedural. We begin on page four. Mrs. Cordero.
I just had a comment on four. I think it's the second paragraph from the bottom. "The district's nondiscrimination policy and related informational materials shall be published in a format that parents/guardians can understand, and when required by law in a language other than English." In our district, I think it might be appropriate to publish them in a language other than English, even in cases where it's not required by law. So I'm wondering if we could maybe say, "And when appropriate," or when?
Right. When appropriate or required by law.
And when appropriate or required by law?
Sure. Also related to language, I noticed on BP 1312.3, and I'm on page 10 now, where we have this whole list of Uniform Complaint Procedures, we've typically added language, and yet that doesn't appear here.
Yes.
And we've, taking from the language of the prior BP, we could add linguistic or economic background, so they would be consistent. Maybe after national origin. Mr. Herron.
No, I want to go back to Mrs. Cordero's point. I am just curious. I mean, I agree with what she's saying, but are we opening it when appropriate in a language other than English? Is it appropriate to put it in Latin? Is it appropriate to put it in German? Is it appropriate to put it in, I mean, are we opening up a possibility there that we really don't want to open up? Although, we understand what you're saying. But I presume you're thinking Spanish?
Well, unless we had a substantial population of students who needed it in another language, if it was appropriate to include a different language, and that would be important, too.
And who decides definitions appropriate?
I think the superintendent, unless, you know, unless somebody wants to challenge it, but
Well, I guess that is a question, Mrs. Deacon, if I may, because we are getting more Arabic speakers into the district, and I don't know, what's the threshold for deciding that it's important to supply information in Arabic?
When it's appropriate? I mean, you have to be, I think, necessarily vague, because an absolute cap in numbers, those, you might, they might be all bilingual or multilingual, just because Arabic or Farsi is one of their languages. I think, you know, my belief is, is that if we had a significant number of parents, and I can't identify that that's 50, or 100, or 10, or five, that needed documents translated in a language other than English, that we would do so, if we were able to do so.
I'm just adding, if we keep it as provided by law, then it is purely at your option.
That's correct.
But as soon as you add the word "when appropriate," then you get into a, hey, I think it's appropriate. You don't. What are we going to do about it? I just point that out.
Okay. Well, not hearing other board members' desires to back off from that change, I think we'll probably stay with "as appropriate" at this time. And I certainly trust Dr. Cash to be able to make that determination, and I think need is what's going to elicit us to do something like that, because clearly, we want to communicate with parents, but we don't need to spend money if people can read what we're providing in English. Okay, any other additions, amendments, changes? Okay. Page 10, we've got board policy, we were just on that one, right? 1312. Okay. Administrative Regulation 6159 begins on page 31. Did we skip some? I'm not sure. There was an awful lot of crossed out pages.
AR 1312.17.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry, page 17. You're right.
I don't, I didn't have any comments on that one. I just didn't know if we
Okay. Nothing on that one. Then we will move to the IEP section, which I'm happy to say, because of a quiz I took in the Special Ed Parent Committee, I knew most of the answers on this. But at any rate, are there any changes or recommendations anyone would like to make in AR 6159? Okay. Shall we take these one by one as motions, or as a lump as a group?
I'm willing to take them as a lump as a group. I'll move to delete old policies and approve new and revised policies in the case of BP 0410, BP and AR 1312.3, and AR 6159.
Second.
And that is with the
With revisions.
Revisions. Mrs. Sawaski has noted. Mr. Herron?
Just one question. Has the Special Ed Department looked at the changes to the IEPs?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mrs. Limon?
And I just want to make a note. When possible, if there was a way to use the track changes feature for our policies, it makes it significantly easier to identify what were the specific changes made versus trying to go back to the old ones. So, when possible, it's a lot of work, so I
I did bring that back to Linda Steele, who does this work with, under Barbara's supervision. And she said she would continue to look through, look into this, particularly in light of the electronic version that we're all going to, because she understands that's difficult to do. The number of hours that she spends already doing this is quite significant, so it would be more, it's not an exact tracking, too. It doesn't work as well as you might think. So when there are big chunks that are new, it's easier to replace. But she knows there's a concern. She knows particularly going into electronic, we may need to look at some other way of doing it.
So if we can't do track changes, I think that we've actually had some that just underline it, and that is equally useful.
Okay. What, that's usually when it's all pretty much the same, and there's certain pieces of language that are either added or deleted. But in the case when it's, when she's chosen to replace it, it's moved all around, and it would be really hard to see that. That's the rationale.
When possible?
Yes, when possible. Thank you.
And maybe until we go completely electronic, all the copies we get that are completely crossed out and deleted, we could read those online and then just have the new paper version, because I cringe when I see how much paper is being used here. And I, we don't really read the ones that are crossed out, you know? I mean, so
My only caveat on that would be that when the members of the public are looking at the attachments online, that they won't necessarily think to go look at the board, you know, existing board policy pages. I think it's helpful for the public to see it together. So as long as, I mean, that's all electronic, but if that could happen, so that we don't get hard copies anymore, but of course, you know, it's all going to go away, right, by the next meeting? So, we'll see. But if it doesn't, then we could, we could do something like that, make sure it's available to the public together.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a second, but I think we have not yet voted, so I will call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. The Budget Revised 2012, something we always, I think, now look forward to with some trepidation. I don't mean to set you up.
A little more enthusiasm, please. Let's go right into this slide. So the State of California has increased its budget problem from $9.2 billion in January to $15.7 billion in May, and this is due to the state overestimating its revenues. For years now, the state has been overoptimistic regarding their revenues. We practiced this earlier. The nation is trying to grow its way out of the recession, so how are we doing? We are in a negative growth in the recession. We are, California's traditional recovery looks more like the blue line. The US recovery below is the normal, USA's average as of now, and here is California's recovery. As you can see, it's slow, and it's way below what the traditional California recovery is. The next slide represents the State of California's spending per pupil. As you can see, California's As you can see, California was above average in nineteen seventy-nine and eighty, and in ten, eleven, we're about three thousand dollars below the national average. Here's California overall, which indicates we're amongst the lowest in funding. We're in the lowest performing states, along with Arizona, Nevada, Idaho, and Mississippi. Another concern is, of course, our cash flow. And if you can see this, I want to point out that these, this is a huge issue for the district because of the cash flow issue. So basically, what happens here is that they're taking money that is owed in eleven twelve and put it out into another year. And when it crosses years like this, what happens is, the state realizes it can't afford to pay us, and that's when all these triggers start to pull. So we, we anticipate that we're going to get this cash. We hope we get this cash, but then when the budget starts to falter and they've missed their revenue, it, it makes a mess for us, because then we, the state can't afford to pay us. So the slide shows how the state has deferred, you know, February thirteen to July, or, yeah, that's, that's next year, but tw- October twelve to January thirteen, August twelve to January thirteen, July twelve to September twelve, July twelve to January twelve. So how could you possibly track your cash in this regard? And I think this should be illegal, but that's just my personal opinion. So we can move on to the next slide. So basically, I wanted to point out here that the maroon color is a hundred and five million. That's if there was no deficit, that's what we would be receiving, or we are entitled to. And some people don't think that's important, but I do to show how. So to show what the state has been doing to us. So the, the blue one is eighty-two million, so this is our deficit, this is over twenty-two percent. So, and that's no laughing matter, I'm sorry, but that's twenty, so we're losing over almost twenty, twenty-two point five percent of our entitlement. And then the red is what we will be funded on if the tax initiative does not pass in November. And that represents, the difference between the eighty-two and the seventy-six represents the trigger, which is all of our state aid. So we're entitled to five point five million in state aid. Our, our trigger is five point nine. So they will take all our state aid. So basically, we will be funded by property taxes next year, if the tax initiative doesn't pass. So what we'll be bringing you, next time we meet August, July, I'm sorry, June twenty-six, is a budget that has been reduced by over six million dollars in revenue, and, or about six million dollars in revenue, and the equivalent cuts, which represents the furloughs, our natural attrition, our retirements, our resignations, and reorgs in the district office. And I'm proud to say that we will bring you back a positive certification with a three percent reserve. And let's just all hold our breath. So I'm here to answer any questions.
So your comment about all property tax funding, what significance does that have for basic aid? And would it make a difference?
We, we are, we are a revenue limit district. We are receiving five point five million in state aid. If the trigger's pulled, they just don't give us that. So it, we have to be seventy, we have to be seventy-six million nine one nine five eight eight to be basic aid.
Parker.
I think that this is important to point out, because in the public's mind, often, basic aid is a positive thing. This is a case where it would be extremely bad if we were basic aid. And so I, I don't want the public to think, oh, well, that's great, everybody wants to be basic aid. This, this is backing into it and, and having far less money. And so it's very important that we not be basic aid.
And the reason why that is, is because they deflated us into basic aid. So then we have a year reprieve, and then we get hit, if we're still in basic aid, with that eight point nine two percent, which they take, so they take however much excess you have.
It's the double hit, because, and what's interesting is that more districts have fallen into basic aid recently because of the reductions in state revenue than any, at any time in probably California history since Prop thirteen.
That holy grail doesn't really mean much anymore. And I've noticed how some of the basic aid districts, depending on what happens in November, will see some very interesting things happen as well.
As board members stated in response to CSCA's MOU, none of this could have happened without our employees taking a pay cut for next year. And it's every employee in the district will have, will make less money next year than they made this year. And that we could not be balancing the budget, we could not be bringing you a positive certification, we could not be attacking our structural deficit, if not for our employees.
And our students will have five less days of school.
Five fewer days of school.
We have one public comment.
Yes, David Holmes.
Where's our sound man? All right, well, thanks for letting me come up and, and talk. I'm here as a member of the executive board of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. This, well, this is bad news. And I would be remiss if I didn't come before the board to call to your attention the fact, what Mr. Cash just, just spoke of, that your certificated employees have voluntarily taken seven furlough days. Also with the increased cost of health care, it's probably around a twelve percent cut in, in pay. Our workload certainly has not decreased, our workload has increased. All of our schools are moving toward putting together the, how to implement Common Core. It's taking a lot more meeting time and a lot more planning time than most teachers have bargained for. And at this point, your employees don't see that anything at all has come off of our plate. In fact, our plate keeps getting added to. Teachers are working more and working for less. With the loss of measures W and X, certainly overall, class sizes are going to increase. I just urge you, as you discussed, the budget, that you look into the future a little bit. I suggest that you identify the duties that will be removed from the certificated employees' plate to accommodate the additional work that, that they are, are engaged in, to show your employees that they are appreciated and respected for taking seven furlough days. And the furlough days also were, were taken, were agreed to as a way to alleviate program cuts, and, and here we are again, back in a situation where that's a very real possibility. And I just urge you to look in the future, keep your teachers in mind. Your professionals are working very, very hard, as we all are, in this current climate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, and I will just say, I think we are acutely aware of, of the efforts of our teachers, our staff, and our administrators in this really difficult time, and I think we're, we're looking desperately for ways to fill those gaps and finding fewer and fewer options available to us. Board members, any other comments or questions about Ms. Chute's presentation on the budget? Okay, well, we will stay tuned, thank you. We are, interestingly enough, ahead of schedule at this point. F-five was, is scheduled to be a discussion of the parcel tax measures W and X. I see there are some people here in the audience, I think, that are here perhaps to speak to this issue. Are you, can I just ask, are you anticipating more people, because we are ahead of schedule? No, okay, all right, well, then we won't postpone going directly to our discussion of our parcel tax measures. Dr. Cash, do you want to introduce this item?
Yes, as board members in the community are aware, the parcel tax measures put forth voters this past week did not reach the two-thirds threshold required for passage. It's estimated that one of the parcel taxes needed approximately a hundred and twenty votes to pass, and the other about seven hundred and fifty more to pass. We still have twenty-five hundred provisional ballots that are being counted. We believe that the elect, the ballot certification will take place sometime next week. And we will be made aware of that, an email will be sent to Barbara Kiani in my office, certifying the election results. This matters before you, because as you know, those were parcel taxes intended to renew H and I, which would have allowed our district to continue to provide programs for children in our community. Without those parcel taxes, one year from, but prior, sometime in January, well, you and I will be engaged in a conversation about what programs we're going to be eliminating if the board were to decide to fund music, art, science, technology, reduced class sizes, theater, foreign, foreign language classes out of the general fund, since the parcel taxes were no longer available. Well, then, we would be engaged in a conversation about what other programs would have to be cut in order to maintain those programs. You know, we, the, the community, I believe, has, has truly benefited from and enjoyed the measures H and I, and what students have been able to do. David Holmes very appropriately stated that we've been able to put a violin in the hands of every fourth grader in our community that attends our schools and provide them with music instruction. We've been able to put iPads in the hands of most all of our teachers in our secondary schools, in our Avid program in our high schools, and I'm finding out, I found out today, that in our POSI program at San Marcos High School, that is also happening. We've been able to purchase tens of thousands of dollars of science equipment and materials for our junior high and high school. We've been able to offer additional foreign language sections at our junior highs and high schools, and we've been able to continue to provide what I think is a world-class performing arts, a theater program in our junior high and high schools as a result of the parcel taxes. And those, those things will all be on the table, absent some change in revenue picture for our school district. As, as Ms. Chute noted, our, our revenue limit is scheduled to be reduced by six million dollars. I chuckled at the slide, or at her comment about the, the magenta-colored slide, because it's, I think it is important that our community understand the amount of funding that schools should be getting. I mean, that's, this isn't, it's not, it's not, that's not even an adequate wish list, that's what we're entitled to by law, as compared to what we are getting, which is substantially different, and substantially less. And then when you couple that reduction with the loss of the parcel taxes, what, what it portends is, I, I think, a different program for kids in our schools. And that means, I believe, different outcomes for our students in our schools. And as much as any one person might want to tie comprehensive educational reform to a local parcel tax, that simply is barking up the wrong tree. There's lots of places people could go to make the changes that were presented earlier this evening. In front of you is not one of them, because you don't have the power to, to do what, what that person requested. So the matter's before you to have a conversation about W and X, and I'm certainly here to listen to and accept any direction that you might give me regarding the future of parcel taxes.
Okay, thank you. We have two public comments, why don't we go ahead and take those now?
All right, Mark Engels, followed by Marjorie Yavi.
Good evening, President Deacon, members of the board, and school board, staff. My name's Mark Engels, I'm here tonight representing several different people. Myself being one, as a student, a former student of the Santa Barbara School District, a parent of two students in the Santa Barbara School District, a board member for the Santa Barbara Education Foundation, a committee member for W and X, and a property owner and taxpayer. And we, we, the W and X committee ran, and the Santa Barbara Education Foundation ran, a terrific campaign. These are, these are good measures. They're, they're well-written measures, well-thought-out measures, they're replacing good measures. I don't believe that W and X failed last week as a result of the ballot. It was clearly an extremely low voter turnout, thirty-plus percent. And I think our, our measures were defeated by the silent majority. And, and we anticipate, it's with the general election, a record voter turnout. And I have no doubt that these measures would pass well beyond the margins required. I, I don't feel that there was, it was an issue of what these measures were funding, or the amount of the measures, the amount of the, the measures being required for property owners to, to pay. As you, as you have a conversation regarding putting these measures back on the ballot in November, which I strongly urge you to do, I would also urge you to not rewrite the measures, don't change the measures amounts. These measures did not fail because they were too, too aggressive. I think if you did so, you, you run the risk of having to formulate a brand-new campaign to explain why they're being reduced, and why they were the amount that they were the first time. I think if you were to replace these measures on the ballot in November, this, this campaign, this committee could pick up exactly where they left off and convince the people that didn't go to the polls to show up and vote for these. I think we have a community that's extremely, has got a rich history in supporting public education, and I have no doubt that with the time between now and November, that, that we could prevail in, in presenting a message compelling enough to pass these measures. So I would just urge you to, to, to leave the measures intact, they're well-written, you should be proud of, of what you've done.
Thirty seconds.
And, and I, I think it would be destructive if we were to try to, to recreate those between now and November. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie Yavi.
Hello, and thank you. I'm here as the executive director for Santa Barbara Education Foundation, and we've provided the leadership for the campaigns. And I know we did a really good job, and I feel sorry that the, the measures lost. I don't want it to be taken that I'm sorry about anything that we did, but I'm just really heart sick that they lost, and that they lost by such a few votes. I also, I, I also urge you to look at this again. I don't think that the measures lost because of there was any fundamental problem with the way that they were written, or the amount. I talked to a lot of people and didn't hear anybody saying, complaining about the amount or what they were funding. I think it was just a matter of having not enough voters coming out and voting, and people just being lackadaisical about that, of course, they would pass, and they didn't. It stings all the worse to have them just fail by a hundred and twenty votes, or seven hundred and fifty votes. I think that the voters did speak and say they support our schools and, and they support our community. Mark was just showing me on the iPad that there was eighteen other parcel taxes in the state of California, and thirteen of them passed. Ours was just right on the rim. We, we, I feel like we need to take a really strong. We, we, I feel like we need to take a really strong stance. We, I think we need to come out, and now I'm talking personally. I'm not talking for the committee or the foundation. But I personally think we need to come out strong. We have a good community. We have a good proposal. We have a strong school board. We have a strong superintendent. We, we should come out just strong and say, "Come on, voters. Come to the polls and make your voices heard." It was, it's just too darn close to whimper and to scatter away or to, you know, be apologetic. We, I think we really need to come out and revisit it and, and come from a position of strength and confidence that our community will come out and
Thirty seconds.
and vote. So, good luck with the decision, and we'll be eager to hear what you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, and this concludes public comment.
Well, thank you very much. And I was at a meeting last night of the Education Foundation, and I'd like to be able to share, if I may, that they voted unanimously if we decide to move forward to run the campaign again. And I'm so impressed by their energy and perseverance because they really worked hard, and they did everything right. And I think it was low voter turnout. But I want our board to understand that if we did decide to go ahead on this, that they're there once again to support us, and that's very much appreciated. Mrs. Cordero.
I want to echo, I'm sorry, I want to echo part of what you just said, and that is that I really want to express my personal appreciation. I know many, many members of the school community are very thankful as well for the effort and energy that you all put into it. And I'm so, I admire so much and appreciate so much your optimism tonight and your commitment tonight in the face of what was such a disappointment to come back and say, "We're ready to continue, and we really believe in this, in these measures." And I agree with you. I think the issue was the turnout. And I, I think that it really was people were kind of, took it for granted that obviously they would pass. Everybody supported them. And we just didn't have enough people come out to the polls. So, I appreciate the work that you put into it, and I just can't even tell you how much I appreciate your words tonight with that level, as I said, of optimism and as Ms. Deacon said, perseverance and commitment. So, I would be thrilled, you know, if the organization were to run it again because I think you guys have demonstrated over and over again not only your commitment and perseverance in the, to this, to serving the schools, but also your skill and expertise at running a campaign. So, thank you.
Mrs. Parker.
I'll echo my thanks, and I know that we're all really heart sick for our students, and this is very, very worrying. And I guess I'm, I'm only grateful that we have at least one more chance to try again because I think it is just too important for the children in this community to walk away from an effort. I agree that it was probably due to low voter turnout that we didn't, that we didn't pass the measures. Where I'm changing my mind, however, is on the amount because I feel it's so important that we preserve what we have. The reason that I personally had voted to increase the amount from the current levels of H and I was because since measures H and I passed in 2008, we've cut almost $20 million from the budget. And so, there were certain things that we were going to try to put back in. I mean, some of the huge amounts that we cut were class size. We had put class size language in that was different from H and I, career tech, existing art programs and science and tech. You know, we haven't been able to fund it out of the general fund at the level that we had in the past. That was the reason for increasing the amount. I, when it comes down, though, for example, for Measure X, where it was about 120 votes that made the difference. If it makes the difference, if it makes 120 people vote for it, if it's, if it's closer to the amounts of H and I than the amounts of W and X, then I think it's important that we be conservative because I don't, I don't want to lose the electives. I don't want to lose foreign language and art and music for 126 votes. I just don't, I don't want to do that. So, I think it's important that we talk about possibly reducing it. And I'll be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say on that. One other quick question that I have, and maybe my colleagues can refresh my memory because we did have a public comment at the beginning. Somebody who was quite avid about trying to fight the parcel taxes, and I don't know that person's background. But I just want to refresher. When H and I ran, as I recall, with I, there was no opposition in the ballot. But I'm, it rings a bell with me that with Measure H, there was. So, there was a ballot statement against it, and yet, that still prevailed. So, I just want to point out to members of the public that despite sometimes there being a few representatives of the community that might have concerns about it, that it doesn't mean that the vast majority won't still support it. Okay, so, I'll be curious to hear what my colleagues have to say on this.
Mr. Heron.
I appreciate everything. Everybody did. But I have to take issue that it was purely the low turnout. I have, I have a litany of reasons why people put out there that they were against it. But I can tell you, to me, the thing that needs to be overcome is, number one, the Santa Barbara news press opposition, the Montecito Journal opposition, and even though they didn't pursue it, the Republican Party opposition. If you can't overcome those three entities, especially the Republican Party, this is going to be a huge election. It's going to be door-to-door, flyers, everything. And if we can't work together with those organizations, the Republican Party has approached me that they would like to be involved in the rewording of any proposal if we go forward. I sort of amazed myself when we were asked with any concerns about the amount. I very meekly said, "I have a minor concern." And I guess my minor concern was just about 120 votes. I think we can't justify, I'm worried, this is what I look at. Four years from now, if we, let's just say they had passed, we'd be coming back again for another parcel tax for the same amount or more because it's not going to get better in four years. And if we can't get a million six passed, trying to go back again and get another four million, when one of the arguments was parcel taxes shouldn't be automatic. Parcel taxes are supposed to be short-term. But as Mrs. Parker said, nobody ever thought we'd be having to cut $26 million from our budgets when we did this four years ago. And I can't, I'm not in favor at this moment of going back as is. I'm not in favor of going back, making some minor changes in the language. If we went back for something closer to H and I, that might be okay. If we just went back for elementary district in the city of Santa Barbara, that might be okay. But we have to work very hard to at least get, as we did in H and I, neutrality by the opposition. We can't have the news press against us. We can't have the Republican Party against us. We can't have the Montecito Journal against us if we can help it.
Ms. LeMone.
Well, I'd like to echo my thanks and to a lot of individuals who are here, who are not here because I think it was a huge endeavor. And when I think about what I want to do, it sometimes is different than what we need to do. And I think that our students needed this to pass more than anything. And there is nothing that tells me that changing the amount is going to get us the 120 votes. I think the message was strong. Our community supported. We lost this by one or two percent. And I don't know that it's the amount. I truly believe that, I mean, if we think of the comments that were made earlier, people who are going to oppose it are going to oppose a $5 increase or a $50 increase. So, I think that I want to be careful to not consider the 64-plus percent and the 65-plus percent that did support us because they were the majority. They just weren't the edge that we needed. And I do think that it had to do with the low voter turnout. And moving forward, to me, it's actually, the uphill battle we're going to have to fight as a community is that there will likely be more than one tax initiative. And so, again, irrespective of the amount, to me, that's the uphill battle that we're going to have to fight, that we're going to have to energize around because I don't think it will come down to the dollar amount. Sure, there are members of our community that the dollar amount matters. But, but again, the strong majority spoke that they were in support. So, I would like for us to consider the same amount. I hear what has been said, and I do think that there is so much value in working with individuals who have concerns. I think there's also misinformation about what a school board or a school district has control over and how we can or can't tie items together in a package. But do I want to raise taxes for everybody? No. Is it needed for our students? Yes. And there is no other way. I mean, what, the earlier conversation about the budget, what I heard was that our funding formula is moving to basic aid. But our need is another 30 million that we're not getting from that maroon budget you showed us. It's, the state's just changing our formula. They're not changing our need. And to me, this goes back to the need. We need it. I think it's worth giving it another shot. And again, I thank everybody who's been involved with this effort because I think it's a very, it's very much a big effort. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. I, I think we're all still kind of processing the emotions that we felt after such a close loss. I mean, it was really a wrenching experience. And to think that the majority of voters actually did support it. But with the two-thirds majority, that's a really steep hill to climb. And in some ways, the minority vote took the day. I have spoken to a number of people as well, as I'm sure we all have, and I've certainly listened to what the Education Foundation has had to say. I will say, I believe there are folks out there who supported us this time, who are probably more progressive in their political orientation, who do care about the amount. And I, I think we can't ignore that, especially since there will be other revenue measures on the ballot. And if people are thinking, "Well, if I'm going to vote for Brown's measure, or Munger's measure, and the schools," it's a tough call. I think if you, if you asked me to put a value on, you know, exposure to education, to music and education, it'd be a lot more than $54. I can tell you that. Nevertheless, I want this to pass if we go ahead on it. And I want to do everything we can to make sure that happens. And I'm very interested in what Ed has to say about bringing in some of these other groups that potentially might support something at less, at a lesser amount. Because honestly, when I walk my neighborhood, I hear people telling me that it was too much money. So, having said that, I, you know, I'm willing to listen to the rest of the board. I would like to say that we are going to have to move fairly quickly. Dr. Cash has told me that by June 28th, if we're going to put these back on the ballot for November, we need to have that information to the County Elections Office, which means that our next meeting, we have to be ready to go. And so, I would like us to make a decision tonight or at least think long and hard about where we're going to go in terms of, are we going to do it and what might we do about the amount? Mrs. Parker.
Well, I personally would, would vote on the 26th to put it back on the agenda for, sorry, to put it back on the ballot in November. I, I'm, I think that the amount should be less and that we should pull a couple of pieces out. The language, the new language that we'd had in about career tech, new language that we had in about class size reduction, we wouldn't be able to afford it if we, if we lowered the amount. And at the same time, I recognize that even with the existing program, there have been increases in costs because the costs have increased over the past four years. And so, I don't think it's appropriate to the exact same amount. I was thinking of something in the mid-30s range. I also think it would be very useful if Mr. Heron wants to sit down with representatives from the Republican Party and from the Democratic Party to talk about this. I mean, we could assign representatives to do both. If anybody wants to give input, I think that that would be great. But it would have to be on a very short-term timeline. And I think that we could, as board members, individually judge whether or not it's useful to have those meetings and if there's anything positive that could come out of it or if it's pointless. And that's where I stand on it right now.
Mr. Heron.
I just want more comment. I forgot. You know, the most vital thing that we need to be working with is getting the governor's proposals passed because that's going to affect our teachers and students far more than H and I. And so, we've got to also keep in mind that that's so very vital to pass. And if we do anything that might go against that or help that get defeated, we haven't done anybody any good. So, I think we need to be aware that that's going to be a major battle also. And I think you mentioned that, but it's going to be huge. It's going to, this is going to be an electrifying election, I think. And so, it's, it won't be easy.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I'm sitting here listening to everybody, you know, and I think everybody's making very valid points. And I go back to what our representatives from the Education Foundation said about wanting to run a campaign again based on basically the same measure. And I certainly want to respect your input because I feel like, you know, they really did the work and have earned the right to really be listened to. At the same time, I'm like everybody else. I just want the measures to pass. I don't have any vested interest in it being a certain amount. And I, I don't feel really, you know, strongly one way or the other. I personally do think that it was the vote, it was the turnout, not the amount, that caused the defeat. Because I think when I look at what was on the ballot and who was running, which races were sort of a shoe-in that might have brought out more of our supporters had they been more hotly contested, which measure, or what items on the ballot were likely to elicit voters that might not have been so supportive to this position. I don't personally think the dollar amount was the tipping point of 120 votes or 750 votes even. But if other people feel strongly about that, I'm not wedded to the amount that we had. And I just, but I do want to say that I think we should put it back on. I think we should discuss, you know, and reach some mutually agreeable amount. I do think it needs to be, you know, meaningfully more than H and I because the cost has increased so dramatically and our cuts have been so dramatic. But, you know, if people want to reduce it by some, that's, and people, when we feel like we can do that and we can get it to pass, that's, you know, that's okay with me. But I do think we should figure that out quickly and get it back on the ballot for, for November. And I, I understand, you made me really stop and think, Mr. Heron, with your comment about the governor's initiative too and whether we want to be in competition with that. But I feel reasonably comfortable that I don't think our local, you know, parcel tax would really that I don't think our local, you know, parcel tax would really compete with the, the governor's ballot. I mean, maybe locally in some people's minds it would, but I think overall, probably would not have a significant impact. And it's so important, it's so vital. And we came so close. I mean, I, I really do think it's important for us to remember, even given the low voter turnout, the overwhelming majority of voters supported it. It was the minority that prevented it from passing. So, so for what it's worth, I, I really do want to just suggest that we could, I would even be willing to vote today to agree that we are going to move forward with putting it back on the ballot. And then at our next meeting, determine the, the, you know, the details of it.
Would you, would you like to go ahead and just make a motion to that effect?
I'm just a little concerned about that because it's not like a first reading of a board policy. I mean, this is something that the, the public really might want to have more input on before we took action.
I'm, I'm willing to wait. And if we can perhaps just sort of indicate our, our interest in making sure that we're ready, that we have a language ready to move forward at our next meeting.
Mr. Price, did you want to add something?
Well, it's on the agenda. It's a discussion item. And Dr. Cash's memo indicates getting direction from the board. So you would not want to pass a motion. However, because of the need to bring back formal documents in a resolution, I think it would be very helpful to get a little bit more specific direction or tentative direction in terms of dollar amounts and any cutouts that you want to be thinking about now, with the understanding that it would be very easy at the time that it's brought back, two weeks from now, for there to be language changes made, as opposed to having it wide open.
I think that's good advice because I, I don't relish the thought of us sitting up here crafting the language in the only meeting that we have left to do that.
Which will also be the meeting you'll be passing the budget.
That's right.
And I, I would like to just say one thing, if I may, President Deacon. One of the most important bits of data that Ms. Chute's presentation had is significant contextually. And that is, our state is currently funding K-12 education at twenty-eight hundred dollars per student below the average of the nation. Not below the highest amount, but below the average amount in the United States. So I, I, I just, I think that's a really important bit of data. I mean, it's, in my mind, it's a very significant and telling message to kids in public schools. And I believe that I, the board I know that's sitting here with me wants to give our community a different message than that. So that's my one comment.
I have just two quick questions. You mentioned the twenty-five hundred provisional ballots. Was that countywide or?
That was countywide.
Okay. And someone did contact us about a recount. I, I believe you looked into the specifics of that.
Yes. As I stated earlier, the ballot certification, we think, would take place next week. But then the Elections Office has really twenty-eight days from the day to the election. So they could take all the way up to July third to certify the election. So, and then we would have, if the board wanted to request a recount, we'd have five days from the receipt. So I would believe it's going to get certified next week. They actually have till July third by law to have the election certified. So, and a recount, we would pay the cost for it. There's no way to estimate what it would be. It would be obviously more expensive if it was done by hand than electronically. That's the information that I've received. I have more detailed information if anyone's interested.
Madam President, could I make one more point?
Yes.
Would that be appropriate? It's not from my legal perspective, but I haven't heard it mentioned at the board level or in the press. But I think it's important to point out that the go-to-the-polls voters passed both these measures. And I think it's also important to point out that the percentage of go-to-the-polls voters was only twenty-five percent for both measures. That's shockingly low. The overall turnout was very low, and we all know that. But when you take into account what would normally be expected from go-to-the-poll voters in a presidential election year compared to the twenty-five percent that actually turned out in June, obviously, I think most people would agree that that is rather telling. And then I just, I'm going to take the last opportunity to make even more of a personal statement. Because the very little vocal opposition that we've heard, including from the gentleman who spoke tonight earlier, what's troubling to at least some people is that while many of us would agree that there's a quagmire in Sacramento, that there is work that needs to be done on a variety of issues, compelling needs for changes to be made. By the same token, virtually all of us would agree that, for example, the federal budget is in horrendous shape, the military budget, there are structural problems in military procurement. But yet, I don't know that anyone would publicly urge that our people overseas and that our troops on the ground not be furnished with the information, with the materials that they need.
We have public comment for personal messages, and Mr. Price hasn't put in a request for a personal comment. And I think if we allow him to make his comments, anybody else in the audience could make comments. And I just think we should follow the proper protocol.
Well, thank you. I'll stop, Mr. Heron. But after eight or so years, this being something that is very personal, as well as an issue before the board, I wanted to comment. But thank you.
Okay. Well, I would like to give Dr. Cash better direction so that he will know what to bring forward to us next time. If we were to reduce the amount and to eliminate some of the items that were in W and X, because career technology and the, the trade-related courses pulled so high, I would personally like to keep that in. The one area that I, I mean, I don't want to give up anything. But if I had to, it'd probably be class size. And everyone loves lower class sizes. The research quite often shows that it doesn't make a difference. And we can spend a, a lot of time debating that. But I personally would like to go ahead. I'd like to give you that direction. I'd like to hear from other board members about, I've, I've gotten a sense of where you are in the amount. And some people feel strongly, some don't. But can we come in at a, at a lesser number? Is that agreeable? Mrs. Parker?
I just wanted to, I pulled up the Godby report. And to go back to where it moved from probably yes to definitely yes. And they, they did it in sort of bigger chunks than what we looked at. So they looked at sixty-five, fifty-four, forty-three, and thirty-two dollars. And for the high school district, for a November 2012 election, at thirty-two dollars, it was a sixty-five percent definitely yes. And that's a jump up. At fifty-four dollars, it was fifty-three percent definitely yes. And-
Did you say there was a forty-three as well?
Yes. So forty-three, it was at, for a November election, it was at fifty-nine percent. So it jumps from fifty-three to fifty-nine to sixty-five percent definitely yes. For the elementary district, for a November election, fifty-four was sixty percent definitely yes. Forty-three was sixty-five percent definitely yes. And thirty-two was sixty-nine percent definitely yes. So I would be looking at somewhere between forty-three and thirty-two to try to get as close to that, the, the research numbers for June election that Godby came, came up with this past spring.
I have had several people tell me if it was under a hundred dollars, it would make a difference for them. I also think we're going to have to craft our message. And to be honest, a message that says, we heard what some of the voters said, and now we've listened, and as a result of that, we're willing to ask for less. I, I think that's, that's a way to craft a message. And, and I would really like it to be a bipartisan support for this. I mean, kids of, parents of all political persuasions go to our schools. And I would like to really fold in all the voters. And, and Mr. Heron, if, if you have an avenue to talk to some of those folks, I think we need to do that. And, and if you feel that in order to do that, the amount needs to be less, then I think that's something we need to really consider. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I just wonder with, I mean, for the Santa Barbara News Press and the Monastelo Journal, one, I'm not sure that we're going to really make a difference there no matter what. But I don't, I don't recall whether their objections were to the amount or to the items that were included. Or more general, like what was mentioned tonight. Do you-
In the, in the article for the "No, I measure W," one sentence just burned me. "The extra money, fifty-four dollars a year, will go, we are sure, to everything but where it is intended." Now, if that's not ludicrous, I don't know what is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Heron. Can you specify which-
This is Monastelo Journal.
Thank you.
So, so my, my take on that would be, it wouldn't matter if we lowered the amount because they're still going to be convinced it's not going to go where they, where it's supposed to go. So that, that's the concern I have, is whether lowering the amount is really going to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, or whether we just need to do a better job of educating. Like, for example, the gentleman who spoke today, I mean, his, his opposition seemed to be based on erroneous understandings. And so lowering the amount probably would not have made a difference to him either. So that's my concern. I'd, I'd rather go for the highest amount we can and do a, and, and try to do a, a sort of a beefed-up job of making sure that we're getting the real information out and people aren't listening to errors.
Ms. Lee Moon?
I would echo. I think the statement that Mr. Heron just read only further strengthens the point that it was not about the amount. I think that if we need to change our approach to moving forward, then I think that that's something that we need to do, whether it's by doing more education to our community, or whether it's by working with more groups who don't seem to have the full information. I also think that we're starting to, there's a lot of variables that weren't considered in the report that we got from Godby. There was speculation on how many tax initiatives there may be in November or not. We think we're at least getting to an addition. I know that locally, there's another tax initiative. I think that we, we, it's not in our capacity to fully, to fully grasp the impact that all of these tax initiatives that are buzzing around are going to have. And for me, the comments that I've heard have been more about, I get it, we're going to support schools, but everyone's wanting us to pass a tax. So I think that if we don't really rally around educating our community, again, the amount, don't get me wrong. I think, I mean, it's not that there's like, yes, let's tax everyone. That's not what I'm saying. But I think that when we're getting twenty-eight hundred dollars less than the average in the nation, I'm thinking that a hundred dollars, it's such a small portion of what we really need. So I would go for the highest amount. I hear my colleagues as far as not feeling comfortable with the fifty-plus amount. But for me, I would go for the highest amount because I also think that there's a huge number of individuals that are putting a lot of work. We're going to invest more money to put it in. And I want it to be worth what we're going to try to accomplish.
Speaking of investing money, I, the Education Foundation fundraised to pay for this campaign. And they will now be faced, if we go forward, with fundraising all over again. And it wasn't an easy task, and it, it's more difficult, given that folks they've already tapped have given. And, and one of the things that was presented during the campaign was the fact that school districts across the state routinely provide funding for mailing information. And apparently, we are unique in not having done that in the past. And so one thing I would like to ask the board to consider is that if, if we go ahead on this, that, that we agree to provide some funds for informational-only mailings. And that's why I was asking about that policy earlier because direct mail is a great way to reach voters, but it's, it's expensive. And I think we were hard-pressed to ask the Ed Foundation to come up with that money again, as, as, as much as they did in the past, although I certainly know they are committed to trying. But that's something I would definitely like the board to consider. Mrs. Parker?
And I'm going to go back to the numbers because I want to get as specific as possible and get us out of here as quickly as we can. The, I, I think it's important, because I, I don't think that in a, in a larger election, that individual newspapers, particularly locally, that their endorsements, while I really appreciate them, you know, I appreciate their points, both when they're pro and con, I, I don't think that that ultimately makes a difference. And sometimes I don't think it's the direct mail. And, and it's, when it's this close, it's, it's really ju-, it, it comes down to just individuals and how they're feeling on that particular day, or, or how they feel about the schools in general. But I want to point out that when we polled it, we were polling voters who were not influenced by advertising, by endorsements, by positions on either side. And voters without that kind of feedback, they do care about the amount. They do care about the amount. And the numbers changed dramatically between thirty-two and sixty-five dollars. And so, given that it didn't pass at fifty-four, I think it's so important that it does pass, and it could come down to another, I mean, it could come down to two votes. It's, it's important to me that it be somewhere between thirty-two and forty-three, that we, that we do reduce the amount.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, I think that, that keeping it under a hundred probably does have a psychological effect, keeping it under a hundred total. I would like to not, to see it not go below forty. So if we can do something with that.
Mr. Heron?
I'll, I'll just say what's on my mind. Obviously, I would like anything we do to be a unanimous vote. But I'm not prepared at those numbers to be a unanimous vote. I'm not sure what number it is I would be willing to be, but it's not in those ranges. I don't, I don't know. But at this point-
Can you give us a feel of where you are?
I don't, I don't know until I understand a little bit more about some of the groups I talked about. And I'll do my darndest to find out. Because HNI passed with no opposition. And even if some of the groups I talked about took no position like they did in HNI, that's fine with me.
Mrs. Parker?
Although I'll chime back in and say, again, H did have opposition, and it still passed.
Well, with one person, you know, one major person writing, it wasn't a, it wasn't on every single piece of paper that one party passed out. You know, and that's a huge difference. You know, and every single candidate of a persuasion, you know, they have all of the people they vote for. And down at the bottom, you know, parcel taxes vote no, because that's the party line. That's hard to beat.
Right. And, and I think it's so interesting that, that the vast majority supported it. And, and yet, a party that I think wants to be more relevant locally took a small minority position. And, and interestingly, I think it does hurt them in other issues where it's a, it's a fifty-one percent to get something passed, or fifty-plus one. But I also want to chime in on what you said, Mrs. Deacon, and that is, if we were more towards forty and had some money- were more towards forty and had some money that it was relevant, that we, we could talk about career tech, um, I would be okay with just removing the, the class size language. Um, because I don't wanna mislead the public and think, "Oh, we can just reduce the amount" and think it's gonna do the same thing for the kids. It won't.
If we, I'm sorry, if we, um, reduced it to, I don't, I get forty, I'm gonna say, um, and eliminated class size from the, the list, is that realistic? Or does forty not cover everything else that we have on there?
It's all relative. Um, I think the, the most appropriate message is what, um, Ms. Parker just stated, and that is that it can't be to the community that we're gonna do everything that we talked about, that you all talked about in, earlier this year, for fifty-four dollars. Uh, it just simply can't be done for a number less than that. So, it'll be, it'll be less. Exactly what it'll be will be determined on what the, you know, whatever you deter- you decide to put in the resolution, what the voters approve.
Well, what I was gonna recommend is that we bring back language to that effect. Um, forty dollars, forty-three dollars, whatever we think will work. Um, eliminating the, the class size. And then at our next meeting, and hopefully, Mr. Herron will have some additional information, maybe many of the rest of us will too, um, we can determine whether we can increase the amount or remove anything else, um, and whether that will work. But at least it'll be some specifics for Dr. Cash to work with to bring back to us.
And you probably can find a dollar figure for the class size reduction so that we would know how much that would cost or would not cost, depending on whether we included it or not. Okay. So, it sounds like we, you have direction? Oh, Mr. Herron, sorry.
One, one of the complaints I heard throughout the process was, "We didn't sell what we were gonna do with the money." It was, "Okay, just like we've had this discussion, is it fifty or forty or thirty?" Rather than saying, "Here are the fifteen programs and here's the cost and that's why we want thirty-four dollars." So, I'd like to see us at the next meeting, go back and really spell out, uh, if we have a thirty dollars, here are the things that, that thirty dollars will cover. So, the public knows, um, what it is we're talking about. Um, rather than we're just talking, "How much money can we raise?" Um, so I think we need to be a lot more specific, um, in, in our promotion of where it's going.
And I, I will just say that I know the Ed Foundation tried very hard to do exactly what you're describing. And one of the sentiments I came away with was, maybe we provided too much of a laundry list and what we should have been doing was telling more personal stories about how individual students and teachers really benefit so that people can really wrap their minds around what kind of a loss that means. I, I have to say, when I was at the Galita Valley Junior High Graduation, listening to that orchestra play "Pomp and Circumstance" and realizing that that orchestra is at risk now, um, really made a huge impact on me. And at, at one of the other graduations, I heard, um, a quote about, I even wrote it down. It was one of the graduation speeches from a student said something about, "In the confrontation be- between the stream and the rock, the stream always wins, not through strength, but by perseverance." And I think that's kind of our marching orders, is that, you know, we can prevail if we persevere, but we're gonna have to get boots on the ground. We're gonna have to get people walking precincts, knocking on doors, doing all the things that, that a lot of these ground campaigns look like, which didn't happen so much. And we're gonna need to reach out to our parents and every single person who comes to us and says, "Please don't cut my child's program," we're gonna say, "Here's, you know, here's what you need to do."
I think you mean, they will have to do that.
They need to do that.
The "we" is not including us.
You're right. Okay. Are we clear?
Well, I want some clarity on, on Mr. Herron's request because, um, what I don't wanna do is put the board or the district in a position by outlining very specific things and then not being able to deliver those things based upon circumstances which I can't predict, including the passage of the Governor's Tax Initiative or not passage of it. Um, I can provide the same information I provided the board, um, previously, um, in relationship to what it means as far as additional funds for science, for music, for art. But to say that we're gonna buy two-hundred-and-fifty iPads or we're gonna have, you know, ten thousand dollars allocated to every science classroom, uh, I, I don't, I don't think that's inappropriate or, or would be accurate for me to do. So, wha- what would you like? Mr. Herron.
I still go back to HNI. What I loved about HNI, even though I wasn't on the board, the twenty-seven dollars was spelled out in terms of two dollars and fifty-two cents of this goes to this category, ten dollars and five cents went to this category. And that's how we arrived at twenty-seven dollars. It wasn't, "Hey, let's get twenty-seven dollars and then figure out how to spend it." It was, it was much more of a specific kind of discussion that the board had at that time. Um, and the board cut the numbers, up some numbers, cut some numbers. But you could, you could see in general how the thirty dollars or forty dollars, um, was allocated out. And I don't think that's too hard to do because you have your categories, but just make it more, make it, don't give us a laundry list of ten pages. Just, "Hey, it's gonna take two dollars and fifty cents to do science. It's gonna take three dollars and twenty cents to do technology. It's gonna do this to, whatever it is." And then you arrive at your, your dollar amount. That's just my thought. That's what I liked about HNI.
Ms. Limone.
Um, and I, I hear what Mr. Herron is saying, but I'd like to actually change that because I think that, uh, if we wanna do something like that, then that needs to come from the board. Five percent's gonna go for the sciences because what I hear Dr. Cash saying is that two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents going towards science is gonna buy us one thing, what's today, May, no, June, whatever, twelfth, twenty-twelve, will buy us one thing. But two dollars and fifty cents, um, eh, May twelfth, two thousand and sixteen is gonna buy us something different. So, I, I hear what you're saying about specificity, but I think that maybe that should come from the board. Ten percent, and I'm making it up. I mean, whatever percentage is going towards the sciences, if we feel that that would be better, uh, that would be a better tool to help us sell it. Cause I don't know that we can actually say, I mean, what is buying science? And I think we get into a really tough conversation if we do say it's iPads because those will for sure go up. Um, so-
Can I clarify? The document I'm talking about was not, it was a worksheet. It wasn't specific. I mean, it, it was specific by the major categories.
Right. Oh, I'm, I've seen it.
Yeah, but it was a worksheet. It, and, and believe me, we didn't abide by it. But it was a, it was a good guideline that gave a perception of how we arrived at a number.
Yeah, I, I, my, I, I, I have no problem putting that together, but the concern I have is being held to that four years from now.
Yeah.
That somebody's saying, "This is, you said you're gonna spend two dollars and fifty cents." And what could happen four years from now? There could be, there could be a digital high school grant that comes out, which means we don't need to spend any money on technology because we're receiving funds from another source. Or there could be, you know, a foreign language grant that comes out. And so, we're able to offer foreign languages that, that we just don't know about right now. And that's the concern I have.
Yeah. It, it was not a document that was, the only thing in there we held our feet to the fire was ninth grade math. And that was because that's what we promoted specifically. None of the other things were that specific. It was, just gave a general sense of how you arrived at the number. That's what the public told me, is, "You didn't tell us how you arrived at the number. You, you just picked the number because it raised X dollars." Um, so I think, I don't know, it, you know.
Well, and that could be reflected in the language we ultimately write so that it doesn't necessarily tie us up. As, we saw we got into trouble with those class sizes. And I absolutely hear what Dr. Cash is saying because we wanna pursue all kinds of other alternative sources of revenue and we don't want those to be jeopardized by locking ourselves in. Mrs. Cordero, you had a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I don't want us to lock ourselves in. I don't really think we can because we can, we can guarantee we would not be able to, I mean, it's, it's virtually a given that things are gonna change and we will not be able to stick to something we put in writing today. Um, but I do think that maybe something like a worksheet where it just sort of says, "Okay, um, this amount, it would take this amount to do this. It would take this amount to do this." Not saying this is what we're going to do, but just, this is what these kinds of things cost. Um, now, in, you know, two thousand and twelve dollars. Um, therefore, in order to accomplish the things we wanna accomplish, we, we determine that we need to request at least this amount, um, in order to have a realistic, uh, chance of trying to fund the things we need to fund. Um, but not absolutely making it clear that it's not saying this amount is gonna go to this item and this amount is gonna go to that item. But just if we wanna do these things, it'll take at least this amount. Um, that might address what Mr. Herron's, uh, concern is, as well as giving us the flexibility to not have to stay within a strict parameter.
So, so I gave you guys several documents that were very similar to what you said. So, would that be sufficient, just to, to put it in different, that, that was all based on fifty-four dollars. So, I could give it to you at thirty dollars and forty dollars and twenty-seven dollars. Would that be sufficient?
It would be for me.
Mr. Herron.
In no way am, am I implying in any way, shape or form to lock us in because we learned our lesson in ninth grade math. So, that's the farthest thing from my mind. I don't want anything to lock us in. We have to be flexible.
Mrs. Parker, last comment.
I, I just, uh, in thinking about it, I think that the format of the ones for HNI would be, that, that worksheet, because the, in, in fact, I felt like W and X, um, the, the information that we got was maybe a little bit too specific. Um, and, and, uh, it might be better to, to make it more general categories and, and simpler for the public to, to look at and see.
Okay. So, why don't you, uh, provide us with those? Bring back to us on the twenty-six, some language, let's say forty dollars. We, we don't have to stick with that now. We can change that exact amount, uh, on the twenty-sixth. Um, cut back on the number of, of things that we're trying to do. For, for instance, eliminate class size reduction. And, uh, is there anything, anything else you wanna?
And, and just be in touch with, um, your board members over the next two weeks on this as we poll the public and, and, uh, poll local officials that would endorse.
And we should probably, I, I've forgotten now the terms of our contract with Brian Godby, but, uh, was there any clause about if it didn't pass, he'd come back and give us any more information? It might be worth at least a phone call, just-
I've talked to him.
Have you?
Yeah, twice.
Okay. All right. Well, if he informally shared any thoughts with you, that would be useful too. Okay. Um, we, we have one, uh, consent agenda item to come back to, which had to do with, uh, that was D-ten, has to do with the, uh, the health plan recommendations. And I, I'd like to say I, I pulled this, so I'll, I'll start. Um, I appreciate that there is a committee made up of a wide variety of constituents in the district that worked on this. And I think it's a great model and absolutely we should, uh, listen to what they have to say. And I, um, as I looked over the options that were ultimately selected and I spoke to Ms. Jete about the bottom line, or really the driving force was, uh, how much was going to come out of people's paychecks. And by the way, I think it's, it's really important to note that medical premium cost is increasing by eight-point-five percent. So, in addition to the effective pay cuts that our employees are experiencing through the furlough days, now they're also paying eight-point-five percent for their medical costs. And, and I, and I, I really understand how that's very difficult. Um, and as full disclosure, I actually buy my health insurance through the district and, uh, all these amounts are way over what I earn. So, so I, uh, end up writing a check to the district for, for the difference. But when I got out my calculator and looked at some of these things and I had previously spoken to some employees, I noticed that, um, one of the options, and it was the ninety-C Anthem Classic PPO. And I see that there's a lot more PPOs that are being offered this go-around rather than HMOs. And I, I actually think employees probably prefer that because they can select their own doctors as opposed to being locked into doctors, um, through HMOs. And interestingly enough, a lot of the PPOs are less expensive than the HMOs. So, I never be able to really figure out where, uh, healthcare prices come from. But, um, if you look at the, the ninety-thirty, um, PPO and, and it is about sixty-one dollars more than the option that was, ended up being selected, um, that's only a ten percent co-pay as opposed to a twenty percent co-pay. And I just, I just wanna raise the notion that if anybody ends up in the hospital, um, for two or three days, the amount they pay annually in the difference, um, between that one option and the other will quickly disappear in the face of a twenty percent co-pay. And, and the, um, the co-pays do not apply to the deductibles. I went in and read the specifics of some of these plans. And the difference in that one is a three-hundred or nine-hundred out-of-pocket deductible, whereas the one that we selected was like a, I forget, a, a thousand, a three-thousand-dollar deductible. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that those things were looked at carefully. And I, I understand that we want less to come out of people's paychecks. There are some less expensive options that were offered. So, I just wanted to, to mention that. So, you- Okay. And I'm not, I'm not saying change it because I, I understand-
No, I, I understand.
That this was this group's decision, but I just wanted to make sure that that had been considered.
And it has been. And we, we went over this for a long period of time. And then the, um, both units took, both negotiating parties took back a poll for their, um, unit members. And these are the choices they came out. Most of them didn't specifically pick any one, but it was like, "I don't want, it's, I don't want a lot of money coming out of my paycheck. I'm, I'm furloughed, I have this," you know? That was the general consensus. We also matched up how many people were in each one of the, um, the, um, insurance plans and tried to match up the best one for that equal to, but not a lot of money, not a big increase in the premiums. And so, we, this was discussed at length about this. And it got to the point where it was like, "Well, for sixty-six dollars times ten, that's six-hundred dollars, you add that to your three-hundred out-of-pocket and you were there with the thousand-dollar deductible." So, that's the kind of discussion we had back and forth. And the, um, the co-insurance of twenty percent and ten percent, that does go towards their, um, out-of-pocket expense. So, the maximum out-of-pocket would be a thousand dollars. So, I guess they're playing the roulette game that they won't go into the hospital to pocket that sixty-six bucks.
Right. And I just wanna make sure that people understand the significance of those kinds of decisions because the whole penny-wise pound for which-
I feel very good about these insurance plans now because of the PPOs. And, um, I'm real happy that they're, we're going more towards it. And I have, I feel that it's mostly because of the, the, um, the JPA we're that, we're in with the, the county at SIS.
Right. Well, the PPO, existing one is far more expensive than, than new PPOs, which is really nice. So, people can select doctors outside of an HMO now if they want to.
Exactly.
Um, any other board members? Mrs. Parker?
I just want a little clarification. And we got this chart today of the, um, twenty-twelve, thirteen proposed plans with a maximum of five plans maybe selected. So, on the top, it says current district plans. Are those our eleven-twelves?
Yes.
So, currently, for the PPO, we have a one, we have one PPO choice, which is an eighty percent, where it says eighty percent G, thirty-dollar Anthem Classic PPO.
Mm-hmm.
And the employee's paying seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars and twelve cents.
Mm-hmm.
So, the proposed new-
I know.
-one is exactly the same, except the employee pays more than two-hundred dollars less.
It went down.
Um, so currently, they don't have the option that is in the ninety percent C, thirty-dollar Anthem Classic PPO.
No.
Although that would also be less than the current PPO rate.
Well, that, that was what, it, what caught my eye because that one is better and less than our current PPO.
Okay. Um, but I just wanna, I, I mean, that, that, the PPO one is really, that's, that's good news. Um, uh, just sort of in general. Well, I can see your point, Mrs. Deacon. Did they, did they really weigh, you know, it's gonna cost a hundred and fifty dollars more, but you would get all these extra benefits, um, in, in terms of, um, there's a number, there's something missing here. So, instead of a twenty percent co-insurance, is that a ten percent co-insurance? It just says ten percent there.
Yeah, I think that is a-
Yeah, it is ten percent.
Ten percent co-insure, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No? Okay. Well, like I said, I'm not gonna second-guess the committee- Well, like I said, I'm not going to second-guess the committee, and I appreciate all their hard work, but I will go ahead to move to approve item D-ten.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No motion passes, five-zero. Thank you. Coming events? None, that I hear of. I know we're going to go back into closed session, I'll mention that in a second. Aye, future agenda items? Mr. Heron?
We had two changes for the agenda with different agreements, and the insurance one. Can we make sure that those two documents get on the website as changes? And also, I, I, when, when I first joined the board, we were very far behind in minutes. And I understand there may be personal reasons why we are now, but we're back to the point where, you know, it's been, end of January, that our website shows minutes. And the public, you know, deserves to be able to see minutes of, of what we've done. So I'd like to see if there's an effort to bring our minutes closer. I know we, two, two meetings we have approved, but those minutes aren't up yet. They're fourteenth and twenty-eighth of February. I think we have approved those. Sometime in the future, and again, I know everybody's very busy, I get this feeling that all the fundraising going on at different schools is creating even more of an uneven playing field for our schools. I'd like to see a list of which schools have foundations, number one. And I guess at some point, I'd like to see our donation list that we have every meeting. I'd like to see a summary of it, of which, which schools are getting how much donation, so we can get a feel for, are we giving an equal education at every school to every child? Or is it being affected by what a given school can raise in money? I just, I'm just curious about that. Thank you. But again, there's not a hurry on that.
Okay. All right. We did not finish all of our business in closed session. We, I'm now going to close this regular meeting, and we will retire into closed session to discuss item B for public employee appointment, and B five, public employee dismissal release. No. And, I know, but I think I need to come back and say that at the end. So, so we're now going to close and retire into closed session.